We are in mid-rent.
And I'm very proud to be a member of the portfolio on public works and infrastructure.
Thank you so much for joining us today.
Sanbona.
Good morning.
Ikamalami ngulizi Shabalala. Angizugui kipha imask angiko right.
My name is Lizi Shabalala. I apologize, I won't be able to remove my mask, I'm not well.
Ngivela Mnambiti.
I am from Mnambiti, which is Lady Smith.
Elekshinlase Stateville.
Oh, from Stateville?
Yes. Ngimember ka Kongolose.
I am an ANC member.
And ngilungala le komite.
And I'm a member of this committee.
Yabong.
Thank you.
Sanbona.
Good morning.
Ikamalami ngim Tim Marchele.
My name is Tim Marchele.
A member of the ANC.
I'm ngilungu le ANC.
Deployed in the National Assembly. From Mpumalanga in Bushback Ridge.
Mpumalanga eh Bushback Ridge.
Yabo.
Thank you.
Sanbona Nengut.
Good morning.
Etandi.
Good morning, Tandi.
Ikamau Lindi, wekamchobo.
My name is Lindi, wekamchobo.
Ngisuka kisfunda sa se Herikwala, kwindawaya se Kokstet.
I am from Herikwala District in Kokstet.
Ngilungala le komite.
I'm a member of this committee.
Ngitunywa Afrika National Congress, kwindlu yo wisom tetwe kapa.
I represent the ANC of the African National Congress in Parliament in Cape Town.
Se atchogo zukbanani namch.
It's a pleasure to be here with you today.
Good morning, everyone.
Sanbona Nenonke.
I'm Sharon von Skalvik.
Ikamalami Sharon von Skalvik.
A member of the African National Congress.
Ngilungu le African National Congress.
Deployed to the National Assembly.
Ngisabenza endre shambte osigazewonke.
And I'm a member of the Portfolio Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Futheni ngilungu le komite lizesngalasisindanganyi, nemisabenzio mpagaz.
And I'm from Uppington in the Northern Cape.
Ngibuyai Uppington, enyagatsuka apa.
Thank you very much.
Mbongakulu.
Sanbonani.
Good morning.
My name is Wayne Thring.
Ikamalami Wenfree.
I reside in Pintown, just outside of Durban, KwaZulu-Natal.
Ngowase Pintown, njenga pante kwasetsewin, kwalapawazun Nadal.
I am a member of the African Christian Democratic Party.
Ngilungu le African Christian Democratic Party.
A member of the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee and Member of Parliament of South Africa, thank you.
Ngilungu le le komite lizesngalasisindanganyi misabenzio mpagaz. Futheni ngilungu le Parliament asinsim Afrika, nyabong.
Sanbonani.
Good morning.
Ikamalami Elfas Mathebula.
My name is Elfas Mathebula.
Ngokhlala, nomalang vela kwanangi vela, Mpumalanga.
I am from Mpumalanga.
Endaweni kbizawuti i Henrina, Mpumala.
From Henrini, Mpumalanga.
Ngilunga le Parliament.
I'm a member of Parliament.
Njoba li ilunga le Parliament ngimele umboto awandu.
As a member of Parliament, I'm representing the People's Organization.
That is the ANC, the African National Congress.
Agui ANC, the African National Congress.
Thanks Chair, good morning colleagues.
Nyabongakulusamona bo zaguetu.
And the delegates here, my name is Mzogozisi.
Namalungu akwana lapmanu say, kamalami ngiwumzogozis.
I come from the IFP here in KwaZulu-Nadal.
Iwai IFP lapawazun Nadal.
I'm a serving member of the Portfolio Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Ngisabeni ngilungu le sabinza kule komite lizesngalasisindanganyi, nemisabenzio mpagaz. Nyabong.
Si ile komite namchaneje. As this committee today, we are here to seek your views on the expropriation bill number 23 of 2020.
Sizela, pahoso tsimbono yenigomtsetsosfivinyawo, kujliwa wemba number 23 of 2020.
A bill that seeks to repeal Act number 63 of 1975?
Okumsosfivinyaga, nklosuyawo, okshincha, umtsetso womtala kan 1963 kan 1975.
An act that was adopted by the previous apartheid government.
Okumsotsowamiswa, uhulmeni wobanzululo, ulule.
As you all know, we adopted constitution in 1996.
Njoba nasenonke, gesamke la umtsesekelo ngongo 1996.
So this expropriation act number 63 of 1975?
Ngakwakelo umtsetsokzwa genpa la unama 63 kan 1975.
Doesn't talk to what the constitution is saying.
Akulumi ngalo, okxiwu umtsesekelo.
So again, this expropriation bill that we are bringing to you.
Ngakwakelo umtsosfivinyawo, wesawesliwa wemba isizena olapake ni.
Is to provide expropriation of property for public purpose and public interest.
Ungo okshinzeke la, okxliwa wemba, kengesnklosone, nje sekelo zumpagaz.
And in certain instances where it is possible, there will be nil compensation when property is expropriated for public purpose or public interest.
Futheni inkatsige la, pokunisidi ngo, kuzo wenseya, kutsigunshesile, ngakwakweliwa wemba, ngwenche sekelo zumpagaz.
So we are here to seek your views.
Ngakwake, sizela pa, ukuzotshola imi bonoye inu.
Whether you support the bill or you are opposing the bill.
Ongaba kutsinyawe seka umtsosfivinyawo, nomaniyapiki sananaw.
With the reasons.
Feseneka izizatwizaloku.
We are expecting therefore to hear from you.
Ngakwake, silindela ukuozwa, okxiwu yini.
That the draft bill in your hands.
Okusilo umtsosfivinyawo, ulhaka, eni upete. Kufuneka, suwbe genja ne Parliament.
You would tell us how you would want us to speak about it in Parliament. It is your chance.
Lelie tu balenu.
Today to participate in the lawmaking.
Logutsnamch, niban taganyi ekshaweni komtsetsu.
So we'll hear all your views.
Ngakwake, sizo izwa yonke imbonoye inu.
And as such, don't be afraid to speak your views.
Ngakwake, ningasabi, ukuluma lokuniktabangay.
Of how you feel about this bill.
Ungo kutsini izwa, imbonoye inu itsin ninga, umtsosfivinyawo.
We have invited political parties.
Si meme ama lungu se politik civic organization. In tlangan zumpagaz.
Amakosi abaholi bezendabugo. Organized labor.
In nyana zaba sebenzi.
Religious leaders.
Abaholi bezengol. Nabantubonge abakoyo endaweni.
And the community at large. We will therefore, when you present, you indicate to us which organization or you are just an individual.
Ngakwake, oma mdesetsu limbonoya, kestaza, sijelutsubuya, kwe ipintlangano, nomanaba uzmele yena, njongo muntu seka.
Don't feel afraid.
Ningabi no wesaba.
Express your view without fear of favor.
Vezza, je imbonoyaku, ngapandlo wesaba, no wenzelela.
We will be taking all of yours.
Imbonoyonke, sizo itzhas, sampe nay.
But we expect some ground rules.
Kotweke, kuli nde, kutsukwena imtsetsuke ebegiwu.
That must be respected by all.
Okumenesloni iswai, ibobo onke abantu.
The first one.
Owakala.
You only have three minutes to present your view.
Uniwaimzuzemtsatzupela, yowetzula imbonoyaku.
When there is a speaker on the floor.
Umaknes kulume sakuluma.
We expect everyone to respect that.
Silindela, wongkumunusamsoni, ipeloyo ukulumayi.
Even if the speaker is not presenting what you like.
Nomanabiskulume sekulma indowe na ona hamisani nayo.
You must give him or her the chance to speak.
Kumela usnige ituba logutsisi sekuluma.
When three minutes are over.
Umasakpele umzuzemtsatzu.
We will indicate that your three minutes are over.
Sizo kombisubon, kutsimsuziya, kemsatsa ipelili.
And as such, we will stop you.
Sizo besesikmisa.
The only people that we give them extra time.
Abantu esubanis, skatesenge zelwe.
Are the traditional leaders or traditional councils.
Kuzubanga abaholi bezendabugo, nomanaba vila gumkantlu wesoboholi bezendabugo.
And with them, it's five minutes.
Kubonage, imizuzu, imishanu, muntu ngamoni.
We will also introduce provincial members of the legislature.
Sizo besotsulakena, ama lungu ishamtsesfunda zwe akwana lapa.
Councillors.
Amakanzela.
When we are given their names.
Umagisajelwe, nmasasnikwe, amakama ab.
The leaders of political organizations.
Abaholi bezindlangano, se politiki.
When we have their names.
Nawa sobetsula, umasatsula amakama ab.
Amakosi etu.
Our traditional leaders.
We will also introduce them.
Nabofuthige bazowetzul.
We are now going to start.
Sessokala.
We were supposed to start at ten.
Begumeneskalony horale shum.
But we had to wait as you were still coming in.
Kotweke, siesa timgusinlini, wabin sangen.
We will start with the first row.
Sokala ngulain wokala.
On the far right.
Abanga, paku sugul.
Can you please raise your hand?
Sokala kutsi, apamisantla.
Those that would like to speak.
Loy officer ukuluma, stala utapamisantla.
You allowed to speak in any of the eleven official languages?
Umakuluma ngangoma olupi ulimutanda, yekulilimesi shuminani, snazula pezwiin.
Starting on the first row.
Sokala ngapakulain wokala.
Can you please raise your hands?
Sokala utapamisantla, ofisukuluma.
In the absence of any hand, we're coming to the second row.
Umasenge, kisantla, sizo kulain wesbi.
Can you please raise your hands?
Sokala pamisantla, ofisukuluma.
The third row.
Sizula ulain wesatzu.
Number one at the back.
Ungo wokala pe movea.
Yes. Number two.
Ungo wesbili.
We're coming to the fourth row.
Sesiya, kulain wesini manje.
Any hand there.
Nga beskonisantla, kulain wesini.
The fifth row.
Sesiya, kulain wesishanu. Singa beskonisantla.
Yes, there, just next to you, yeah. Okay. The sixth row.
Ulein weshtup. Singa beskonisantla, ukono ofisukuluma.
Ewaba. Yes. Yes, that one, yeah. We need ten people.
Abantabalishum, abaishum.
How many do we need now? We need, we need four, ne?
Shota ngabani manje.
Yes.
Abatsatzu impelin.
This hand, and the lady next to you, yes. And you in front.
Nawa laponapambili.
That too, yes. We will come back.
Sizo besbuyeleni ngalab.
Just a reminder.
Sisinjoma sinkombuz.
You state your name.
Ushoyikamalako.
Indicate which organization you're coming from.
Ushoku tumele ipintlangano.
You are also free to say that you are not representing any organization.
Ongashofuthu kutawmela ngantlangan.
You support the bill or you oppose the bill.
Ushoku tuya wesega, nomu yapiki sa, nanalumtsosfivinyawo.
For these reasons.
Besubegiza tu zakwage.
It is only three minutes.
Imizuzu nje, onayomi tsatzu.
Thank you.
Sanbonani, repartiso ngabonge, nijonge. Ngopena tngala chere, ngikamga, Enormandin Albann Farm. Ngiparamisuguti mino umteto awpase. Uti, sinizatu lapa, siyathukumese rakulapa, emakai, emaplasi. Eh, tanelo, imbala yetu, setatela mazelu, setatela goonge. Genama yon kulumanje, tinela pe Albann Farm, wu 2017, setatela yon imbala yetu, asinalu, tejibong kulumanje. May nyagrela, ukuji, ku, frisawabu, frisitungale, may sika, nukutu, tetu ya pas. Nyabong.
Polo Baban, ukuzu kamanu, utsubuya, gopanjonganash.
Kamalami ngopena tngala chere, ngikamwe Albann Farm, Enormandin.
Siabong. My name is Begani Chele, I am from Albann Farm. I am here to support this bill. Where I come from, we have many problems in that farm. Our property has been taken away and everything else, they just keep taking and taking our things away. In 2003, they took all our property. At the moment, we don't have anything. I am here to say, could you please pass this bill? Thank you.
Umzwa ke wagastebela. Ngipuma, buyesholumpagachi, ogu, ama civics. I bill. I billi. Ebona gala, izo sisa kakulu. Ektenini abantu, basachebagwazukthola. Indela, yoguba. Ba usabenzio sumchaba, abautola. Ogungo wabo, okfanele lukuti. Gulungi swae izi indo, ezanzi wa imi tetu. Ukusuka gulo ka 2013. Aga 1913 and 1986. So, ibuga gala ge si, kanga nonge, ye mi pagachi, esboni zosebenza kakulu. Partikfanele, segwazukushoguti. Guleliso, elipache, ngapansi, kwe. Gula ulwa, kwe, kwezwe, ngogo constitution. Engige, intandweni, engige kui constitution, lokabati pekulesi constitutional democracy. Isu kigahabigale, uma gutonagalukuti, ama lungela abantu. Ayagandraywa, usugu nosu. Because akwana ma programs, amalwa i government from 1994. Effige now, ogutabantu abathole imi lhaba. Uma abantu me tangelo imi lhaba, uhulmeni, nese itengile. Uma usonde de duze, kwalama plasi, abatangelo ona. Yudon ubonukuti, lendo egui bill of rights. Ekuluma, ngobuiso kustchunze somuntu. Basuzo bekalaga kulu. Ngoba, lendo ye transparency, accountability, ayenzeganga. Kanti, gusisakelosintandweni, ngumasialapa kui constitution. U section one up to section six. We constitution etu. Uyavonukuti anyachela ka usugu nosu, kubesema, i bill of rights, the human rights. U section nine, okuluma. Ngekuluma, ngogutubonka abantu bahadenga. Lababantu, abama le patinans. Afkati farm ela. Okchay strachan farm, industrial farm. And ogupsungabatbesfazanela. Ba, ngoke ba thale plasi mi. Ngabo fifties, but i department, ilatanje, abantu bayo, abao keteka. Besobefigala, bata ba oketeka.
Bahasatse, makasaka tibab. Siabong. Siabong.
My name is Mzwa Kesithebe. I'm representing the civic organization in the area. This bill I support because it will benefit us as a people a great deal. For the people to work the land and they will get what they own, the land because they own. And this bill will actually help redress the unfair laws of 1913 and 1936. Then, in a constitutional democracy like ours, if people's rights are trapped upon and not followed. As since we all know that from 1994, our government said our people must get land. And if you go to the farms, you can see that the bill of rights and the transparency and the accountability is not properly followed. Therefore, the bill of rights and the human rights are not fully observed. In a nearby farm called Staten Farm, we have labor tenants there that have been lodging in that area from the fifties. And all that the department is doing is sending some people and we're not finding any solutions at the moment.
Sanbona, ngalungu le Parliament. Nia voma. Ikamalami ngulaki, ngomshala tu, mongaga Shabalala. La paya emzinwa, senomondi. Ngibuyen tlanganweni, ekwona ebizawuti hashtag isave nomandhi. Nfunu kala ngokutige na. Nengabosnige siskates, nganagangaga, okutsizo kuluma na, kungono nengasbis. Ngoba nina, lapane Cape Town, ninasosongiska. Sokshana ngaitulo, nituwa ngenitamba, nenzana yonki, into sinbugan, so nineskatesning, nipixana nilwana. Kotweke, masifanele, kuzo kulumatin, nesosnige zu three minutes, kungono nengasbis. Futhi masizo kuluma, ngentesirasgangaga yomshaba. Omshaba esuubanga yu, nala babamsho pabangekola, angas, nomanababizile, nomanabizanga, obakweli tina indlemnyam, esngana omshaba, tine saputwa omshaba. Funesitakrisutumshaba ozanguncho, nchoegi, djoba banyebetumshaba wancho, njoakomshaba wancho, omshaba watatwa ngekas, saputwa, zangescho njele omshaba. Sifisugusho, siyasapotutumshaba uetu awbu yegiti. Njen ngoba, watatwa git. Futa ubuye ungetenganga, njen ngoba watatwa ngekas, lobabamku. Awungeteng, awubuis, uselokte omshaba, ngowelen Reformia Labor Tenant Act kan 1998. Utogo didiza, lokonushulegi lu, ustenge yelomshaba, tina jenga malebattened. Sesiya klabana, lababamsho besbanga lomshaba, siyakoshe maplasin, anazni. So kungono, lomshaba, awtatwe, njen ngoba, watatwa ngekas, lobabamku, wa fa abantu. Ogokala, futhi, u section 25, lo nenfunu ku amend. Nasit siyabuga, ulibo ukuluma ngepropate, ipropate yini, ngoba, nali laptop ya loputi, ipropate. Again, utakrisenjen kulume ngomshaba, kuti niso, baputwa nabelung, omshaba. Ngoba nuhulmeni, lavanbafia, 1652, bautatumshaba. Nena ngon 94 manke, djoba nten ngamalungu ANC, nongela, saslidhe, nesbuisele omshaba. Djoba nas, kuti ngon 1910, wakunepambata rebellion. Ne ANC lena yafonyo 1912, fuatresale situation. Kotweke, nanamshane, nesachule, kusubisel omshaba. Selo kuti, omshaba ubuye git. U section 25, ngela nibuge, uy bill of rights. Kuti, uy bill of rights yonke, nengaylungu, isaganjan, kuti, is seven ze. Ngoba asnawa, ama lungu. Una opego, u section nine, lapayana ngoklingan, aslingan. Kukwana bakulu, kukwana bapantlu, kukwana banyemalu, kukwana, abanganamal. U section 10, nakwona futhi. Uyakakrisukutige na, kwenzagalan, ma ubugu tete, ukuluma ngosleefar. Abantbagi temaplasin, basasezikilas abelung. Basakti indeselu abelung, abavumeliki lu ngwaba, abavumeliki lu wa kizil, desitisent, abavumeliki lu, oguba nanton, nanton. So, lomshaba lo, awbu yegit, kotweke, minangfuna maspuma na. Nischele nina, kuti, nisniga nin, lomshaba. Ningasi, ukuza la, nengasuku sijel, kuti.
Good morning. My name is Lakisha Balala. I greet all the MPs. I'm from hashtag save the nomandin organization. Please do not give us short time, I would like to start there by saying, do not give us short time to speak. Because it's better if you don't call us at all. What's the point of calling us here if you'll only give us three minutes? We always see you in Parliament, fighting and throwing chairs at each other there in Cape Town. You have all the time and this is a very serious matter, but you're only giving us such a short time to speak. This is a serious matter because it affects the land. And there are no white people here, I can only see black people in this place, I'm just wondering if you actually called them. The land was not stolen from us. It was taken forcefully through the spilling of blood. Our ancestors' blood was spilled when they took our land for us. Therefore, we requested you return the land without buying it. You should not follow the 1998 Act, where tort diseases failed to purchase the land for us. It's about time that you just give the land back because this land was taken through the spill of our grandparents' blood. Also, you did not specify what you mean by property. It could be a laptop, it could be anything. What do you mean by property? Rather be specific and say that you are referring to the land. In 1962, we all know that land was taken. In 1910, there was the Bambata Rebellion. We all know those things and that is why the ANC was formed. Section 25 of the Bill of Rights does not work for us. Could you please make it to work for us? There is section nine, we speak about equality, but there is no such. Some people have money and some people don't have money. Section 10 does not work for us as well. Section 13 doesn't work, it's all about slavery. And in farms, people are being treated as slaves. They can't bury people there, they can't build decent houses. We need the land back. We need you to bring back the land. And before you leave this place, we would like you to tell us when you will give the land back to us. Thank you.
Sanbona. Nijan. Nyapi. Motanu, amakaza, sbon. Ayekintlangane, e, ngapantuwa. Ekunuswenje, nami ngzoshu kuti. Iskatesbes ngan, ngoruyfunda, lapana nje, angas, nomanikite, noman, angas, nomanikfundo, nomanikizwa, nikodwe, ngenitamshaba, ngsazofunde. Okay. Minangzokala la. Yavonanje, endaweni abelungu. Endaweni nje, yempasha, gashayashay. Gunalea, ndolea, ekwana lapaya, yokuji, yempasha siyakalewa. Kotweke, belungu bade yempasha, enningabi. Kotweke, tinoktuas, asibe u five. Futhi, logo bagwenza ngamabomu bayazuti, nati ilona penkilu etu lenya. Futha bandaba, vuma basen, seselitinas tino. Funnasilweli. Ke, kushu kuzo liwai. Nama ankukuzel, logo to nje, agukorite. Nogungaba, futha skuni, benzanjenjenje layav. So, sakalu, nlungu selen, ndabogungwaba. Ndabogungwaba, njen ndabwe, yinkom. Sekten. Nyabong.
My name is Tandi Makaza, I'm not representing any political party. But I came also to voice out my outcry, particularly on the time. Time we are affording us is not enough. I received the bill, I went through it, but I didn't have the luxury of time to go through it and complete it thermously. I tried to read, but one thing that I need to state is my crowd, that farm owners limit our livestock to five. And yet, their own is not limited. Secondly, we can't bury where we stay, where we live in those farms. So I'm here just to employ you to please attend, number one, to our livestock issues in the farms. Number two, give us the burial rights where we live, where we stay in those farms. Thank you.
Mrs. Chair, to the members of the Parliament Committee and all those present. Our farmers' organization is against this bill as it is. The, there's a lot of land in southern, and specifically turning to KwaZulu-Natal. That belongs to people who live in the Ngonyama Trust and the land that has already been transferred by rural development over the last 10, 15 years to communities. These communities need funds to farm these farms. And that's where one needs to start, to work those farms that have already been transferred to communities. The commercial farmers do their best to support. The commercial farmers do their best to support their workers, the farm people who live on, the dwellers on the farm, with salaries, and they are allowed to keep cattle on the farm, which are dipped and maintained by the farmers in the areas. The other thing is the loans of the commercial farmers, who own a huge amount of money to farm these farms, which make up a small percentage of KZN land. To Land Bank or other banks, and the co-ops, to plant the crops and to pay off the loans which were made to buy these farms. No farms were... Sorry? No farms were given to these commercial farmers. Over the next thirty years, the population in South Africa is going to double, according to the article in the Lampa Viak plot. So our sixty million could double to two hundred and twenty million, which is, we need food security for these people. We need to help those with training for those people who have ready to receive farms. That's in short what I wanted to say. Thank you. Any questions?
Siyan bingelala nonka. San bonan.
Good day, good morning.
Okulbanani, ute vitimlalose, kume wotuwa n, etanauzi. Ngipansi ye kandu na ngulu, ngikomit kandu na ngulu, uwe tax team, weza maplas, kulendes ngayola. Engaba ngokutige, umasilah, lamesoltolika, mbelsheshangoba. Ngelukutu ngkumbul okutu. Lendesi enize ngao la, iye katala ngapani. Uma iso, iso okulunya la ipinela, nitatis kati, tati mniaga, aktua ksaulu ngis. Bayapelabantu. Gushu ta isebenzima, nganjali. Indo ma isebenza, aybona kala okutu ya sebenzi, sheeshayelzeke. Nengasbis elezi indo, esbangu xungu emakaya. Abantu abana gula, abalimi. Abana zo ngshi, inda uzoglima, zo chalange, nokufoya. Iinkambuzabo, nganyuliwe ba itati lama famas. Ngale indo okutu, lokulunya njalo, 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 ayenzeke lend. Ma opasi sumiteta, siya opasi sumiteta. Angas okutu ngfuna lipizwu. Ngomasasishilo sa tumshaba pe la ma obuwi. Kotama nantefuna nganiya, isikwe okutu, snisenzeleyon. Kuna ma famas la, upeta maplas aw ten. Upeta five. Upeta six. Abantu abafunu isebenza ngamaplas, abafunuglima, bawatuli. Uvulumendu, okulumanga njalo, atikoni inda, wazwe ekipa, ayenzeke. Abantu abafunuglima, ayikolento. Amato, indote, eyo, upeta maplas aw five. Si zeitembaga njanndend. Aw five, ma famas, upeta five. Abanya baliza, onka maplas, owasefuenda atatwa abantu. Bayawatataba waliza, bayasebenzi, siya bashala abantu, ekokizang. Yini lenzeka. Angi ilu, kotama nyakuluma. Uvulumende, siya kela okutu, lenta yenzeke. Ngoksheesh. Ya zekoni, eskolwa yini okutu. Nitatisindo la paya nneipande, la paya ntsalepansi. Nitabi be okulumangi, bashale be okulumabantu. Uyapelwa la paya ngapandle makaya. Usi zola paya aktua pumaneni ekon, ni opewa abantu, nde la bashelinga. Usi zi nyembe zotwa. Umshaba ma obuwi. Benza okutu, umuntu isebenza, ngeraite asa South Africa, ngelwesh. Mfamo umsho, mmfamo mnyam, ohamba ngamali, ngen ngomthetwa asa South Africa. Anganigazo, umshaba, oli ngeneyenaje, ungek umshaba umuntu, ngati one hundred dozen meter.
Good morning. My name is David Imlalose. I am from Ward One in Tanhausen. I am here representing the tax team for farms. We deal with matters such as this. It's about time that we find a solution to this problem. Because this is an issue which is causing real conflicts outside. It needs to end here. It's about time that this problem is resolved. Parliament normally come take people's information, but then nothing gets done. It takes years before we find solutions. Whereas people are dying outside, this matter is very real. We need to see results. Show us the results. Because people do not have food, they do not have farms. They are unable to farm to get their food. Because farmers are taking their property. If you want to pass this act, you might as well go on and do that. We told you a long time ago that you should take back the land, you should expropriate. There are farmers who own ten, six, or even five farms, or five, six, or even ten farms, whereas people do not get farms where they can actually go and farm. The government say that it was going to give people their land, but there is no such things. It has not happened. There are farmers, there are five farmers who own five farms each. And when people want that land, they lease them out to them. So people cannot even be able to work on the land. I'm not here to fight, I'm just stating my views. The government needs to hasten this procedure. They normally come, take people's information, write it down, and just say, people are talking. You know, problems are real outside. Bring back the land, give each person their land. If we were to distribute land between whites and blacks, or a black boy and a white boy, you must distribute it equally. If you're giving a thousand meters, give a thousand meters to this person and to the next. Distribute the land equally. Thank you.
My name is Smahalisokif Khlongwan, coming from the Economic Freedom Fighters. But I'd like to say more about the land question, but because of time, I won't. But I think it is very important to say firstly, if you want to move forward, you must understand first where you come from. Number one, South Africa is a colonized country. So now, as a student of Fanon, I must say, Fanon says and argues that, for a colonized country, the first and foremost is the land, which gives us dignity, and it will also put bread on the table. So now, we need land for agricultural purposes, development, industrial purposes, education, and every other issues that is faced as communities. So now, I'm saying to members of parliament, there is no need for them to take too long to pass the Property Laws Act. Because when they pass polient laws, they didn't took long. But because issues of bread and butter, they take too long. We don't need to buy back our land, they must bring back our land. Because the state does not have money to buy land. The money that we must take from the state, it must be able to enable us to make sure that a person who takes the land get resources and be funded by the state, so that he can use the land and all of us, we can benefit. His way late.
I thought you were going to translate. Good morning to everyone. I'm Edith Muller, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a property owner. Firstly, I would like to say the expropriation bill is a necessary addition. And the current one is outdated, so it needs to be updated. The controversy surrounding the bill, though, is potential negative effect on investor confidence and stems from the null compensation provision in land reform. That is my first query about it. Then, also, the power invested in the minister, as it is here. Well, with all respect, and I mean that, with all respect, the track records of our esteemed ministers does not evoke trust. So if we invest so much power in a minister to take decisions, to have the utmost decision, that may cause conflict. Then the next one is the term property, as has been stated before, that needs to be defined more in depth. Property could be any. It could be a house in town, it could be a shop, it could be anything apart from what everybody is talking about, land. So that is a very big concern, what property is really at stake. Then, you had asked that we bring some solutions, what we would like. Some of the things that I would like to see is that the economic consequences of the expropriation without compensation must be properly and fully considered. If such is considered, what would be the economic? And with that, I don't just mean the property owner, but the secondary and further implications of such expropriation. The principle of legality must be honored, and there must be a clear understanding of the circumstances under which the power of expropriate land without compensation may be exercised. By whom and in which respect, which landowners. Now, the minister can give authority to, what they call it, authority. So that authority needs to be defined properly. And who is this authority going to be? And as the previous people have said, it takes so long. I personally have felt a land claim, and we have, without any hesitation, given permission. But we had to wait sixteen years for that to be completed. So if the processes would be...
Your time is up, ma'am. Your time is up.
I understand. Thank you.
Sorry, ma'am, your name, please?
Edith Muller.
Greetings. My name is Situtuz Omzuli, from the African National Congress. Firstly, it would be quite appropriate that I thank the portfolio committee and the parliament to choose to stage this hearing, a bill hearing, at Ummzinyati. I think for historic significance, because last wars of resistance were fought within the valleys and the hills of the greater Ummzinyati district area. Choking off the wars of Vissantluan, the Berke of Vissantluan, the Berke of Ngome, and the rebellion of Ipambata, which to the max their significance, because really, all began as a result of disposition of land by foreigners from the indigenous people. And we sincerely trust that these processes will therefore seek to redress all those historic atrocities and imbalances that were created by the unjust systems of the past. My contribution to the eighteenth amendment bill is as follows. For the ANC, land reform is about redressing the historic injustices and disposition of black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock root and promote socioeconomic transformation. The ANC Land Reform Programme provides a sustainable and radical way to address land question. The ANC will use Land Reform Programme to build productive assets to our people, unlock agricultural productivity, secure food security, and address the persisting reality of apartheid paternal separation. And therefore, my proposed amendments and my submissions are as follows. One, I submit that on section twenty-five clauses, one, four, five, six, and nine should remain as they are. The second one, that on clause two, I make the following amendments. That we add a subclause two C, which must read as follows. Subject to, without compensation or near compensation under condition laid out in a law of general application. Then, as we go further on the issue of the compensation that is payable, the amount of compensation and the time and the manner of payment must be just and equitable, reflecting an equitable balance between public interest and the interest of the affected parties. Having regard to all relevant circumstances, including A, the current use of the property, B, the history of the acquisition and the use of the property, C, the market value of the property, D, the extent of the direct state investment and the subsidy in the acquisition and the beneficial capital improvement of the property, and the purpose of the expropriation. Thank you very much. I think my contribution would be better.
I, Tracy, representing the ANC State. The ANC supports expropriation of property and land as just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both assets to property and land, that exappropriation of such without compensation is part of process. For the ANC, this is about redressing historical... For the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustice and dispossession of the black majority. It is also vital opportunity to unlock the growth, redistribute assets and promote social, economic transformation. The ANC programme provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people. Thank you.
Sia bongakubobonga batetile. Thank you to all who have spoken. We are then going for the second round. Sessizokubaga, etan inisbili. We are on this side. Please raise your hands. Sess ngapa, sitlaba famsizanla. Eh, number one? Number one. Number two? Number two. You must come to this row. Obizwai, oktala kuti, azengapa, glaklilispeke pansi koon. Eh, number three, yes. Number four? Number three, number four? Eh, number five, by that? Number five, ngalapo. Yeah, okay, fine. Na ye. Eh eh, mabeze bakombe, as long as they are going to be within that... Can they all come as long as they can be identified? But they must not exceed 10? Kotamanga, mabange, egutenu, eshumine. Eh, amongst us, we have the Deputy Mayor of Endomeni Local Municipality. Palatsigwe, sukona ipiniligasotelo, basen, Endomeni Local Municipality. Councillor Matula Nkosie from the ANC. Councillor Matula Nkosie, ANC. Can you raise your hand? Sitalpamsisans. Sia bongakakulu, sotelopu.
Thank you so much, mayor.
A reminder, it's only 3 minutes. Sian kumbosa, imizuse, imizhatunje, kupela yokulu. To present your view. Yowetula, imibono, yaku. Also indicate whether you support or you don't support the bill. Upinde ushu kuti, yewe sekanoma, awesegilomshosviviny. And please, your name for records purposes. Sitalunga koshla, usipika malakus, selpali pansi. Eh, thank you. Sia bo. Oh, okay, apparently there are 2 hands there. Ngatsigne zanje mbili, ngalabo. Eh, where are those 2 hands? Eh, they must come. Sitalana zozize ngapa, bazochoin. Eh, another challenge that we have is that we have other people outside. Nginsalesna, kuti, gunabantu, abapansi. That would like to come in. Abafisun, ngena ngapagas. What we usually do. Esu bamuguenza, kye iloku. Eh, the side where we are true. Kuyagutile, abo, esestatili ngabo. Then we humbly ask them to vacate the hall. Esbango, sebagi, sibapumi, lapae holo. Eh, and as such, only if you came after we have passed that, we'd ask you to come to this side. But we would, usotelopu won't leave the hall. Uma wugutsimla, mbe, ufike, eh, sesalile, sotela kuti, uyengale, lalikale ngale, kotage, usotelopu.